Okay, we're going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission for this Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. If you'd all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And you'll also note that this is the official day of allergy season. Put it in my journal. Let me go have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Chair Fran?
Here.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Here.
And we'll note that Commissioner Lepper is out, and we'll also note that Commissioner Smith is currently out.
Although we anticipate him to join us at some point.
Yes, I would hope so.
Hopefully, yep.
I anticipate he'll be here.
All right. Item three, closed session, report, we have none. Item four, adoption of the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt or amend the agenda as presented.
I move to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then, agenda is so adopted. Item five, consent calendar. All matters listed on a consent calendar or considered routine will be enacted by general consent unless the commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the commission staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. The item on the consent calendar this evening is item 5.1, approval of the amendments of the regular planning commission meeting of March 19. Note that the chair will be abstaining, as I was not here, and given that, we may want to postpone action on the item until Commissioner Smith arrives, otherwise we would not be able to take action on it, I don't believe. Well, that's not true. We have a quorum.
We do.
So, I guess we can. So, anyone, yeah, I just had to process that for a minute. Anyone wishing to pull the minutes of the regular meeting of March 19?
I would like to pull the minutes.
As would I.
Okay, very good. So, I'll go ahead and defer to you. We'll move to item six, then. That'll be the minutes. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Keeney for discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just had a couple of quick items. So, on item number five, on the consent calendar for last week, this was actually just, I noticed this as I was watching the video, but I actually moved that item, and Commissioner Lepper seconded it. So, if we could switch those names on item number five, I was the motion maker, and Commissioner Lepper was the seconder. And then, I also wanted to address the amended staff report for item 10.1. So, in our motion, we adopted the staff report as amended, and I wanted to make one more amendment to that staff report, and that would be on page six of the staff report, under Part II, Section 5, Natural, Cultural, and Scenic Resources, under Goal G. There was one instance of vinyl windows being a compatible substitute material that was left in that staff report. I would like the record to show that we are going to remove that reference of vinyl being a compatible substitute material from the staff report under that heading. Those are the two changes I'd like to make to the minutes.
What page was that again?
That was page six. It's not actually in our minutes. It's on the amended staff report that was referenced in our findings. And that was actually another question I had for staff, if we could possibly make that amended staff report part of the minutes, but I'm not sure how we do that. But since we were, since we made those changes to our findings in the staff report, I wanted to make sure that that was referenced.
So, just to be clear, we really can't change the staff report, per se, only to the extent that it's not on the agenda. We can change the minutes, but if there was something in the discussion, the minutes would and should have captured it. So, that would be an appropriate change, I think.
Right. And so, the staff report is referenced in our findings as amended because it was staff's recommendation that instead of having a separate finding that vinyl is not a compatible substitute material, they recommended that we make those changes in the staff report and incorporate that into our finding. Thus, I wanted to make sure that that amended staff report was fully amended as we requested. If that makes sense.
Would it be better, I just want to ask staff, should we postpone taking action on the minutes until our next meeting, when we can review the amended staff report?
I'm trying to think of what would be the most efficient way to make that change. I mean, staff will certainly make that change. I wouldn't recommend postponing the minutes because it's not a minute item. It's not in the minutes.
And we're not proposing additional changes to the staff report. It's just those that we agreed to during the meeting. So, I think Mr. Carter's concern is that the staff report is amended as we agreed.
It was substantive to our findings, and it was recommended by staff that we-
And we haven't been given a comment of amended.
But that would be, technically, that's a separate issue than approval of amending the minutes and approving, unless, unless there's something in the minutes that should reflect that the commission wanted the staff report amended. That would be appropriate for the minutes, which are the subject.
And it does say as amended.
We absolutely did request that the staff report be amended.
As amended during the public hearing.
Chair Fran, if I may, what I would recommend is, under item 13, matters, matters from the commissioners and staff, if-
Correct, yes.
I get a sense that you'd like to have that change memorialized, and I think that would be a spot, at least-
That makes sense.
Just looking over the current agenda to do that.
Okay.
We can memorialize that change of the staff report. That way, it's in the record, and staff will go ahead and make that change to the staff report.
That makes sense. Perfect sense.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
All right. So, then, was there still nonetheless a change in the minutes, or?
Yes, I had a, are you done?
Those were my two.
Those were your two.
Those are your two changes, and then Commissioner Keeney?
My change was to number seven, to the minutes of that meeting. Items of interest to the public, non-agendized items. We had a speaker, her name, I think, was Michelle Reinhold, and she had a comment that really didn't address something that the planning commission could take action on, but she did get up and speak, so I think it should be noted in the minutes that she did appear. And I think her name is Michelle Reinhold. That's what my notes show.
And then- If memory serves, I think Ms. Reinhold was requesting that the city consider, it was an economic development issue, so staff gave her, I gave her my card. I have since corresponded with her and invited her to come to the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, as we'll be discussing recruitment of business to the city.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
And another change on page five. We had discussed using the phrase V-shaped bi-directional ground sign as a clearer description of what was being proposed.
As opposed to two-faced.
So, make that change to bi-directional on page seven. And those were the two changes to the minutes I had.
Thank you. And the chair will note for the record that Commissioner Smith has joined us. And so, Commissioner Smith, the minutes were pulled of March 19. Did you have any changes or corrections to the minutes from the March 19 meeting?
Only that I think that we-
Yeah, there you go.
The Commissioner Ryan Carter had suggested that we bring up the bylaws, but I guess that's not going to be possible, anyway.
It was in there. It's in the minutes.
It was captured? Okay. All right. So, then-
No, no changes.
No other changes. So, the staff, did you capture the changes requested by Commissioners Carter and Keeney? Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair abstains? All right. Nays? None. All right.
Chair Fran, at this point, I just want to point out that we'll, we'll put it in the record that Commissioner Smith arrived at 6:06.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item seven, items of interest to the public, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the vast audience to bring to the council's, commission's attention any items that are not on the agenda this evening and which would be in the commission's purview. We will limit your comments to three minutes, and no disparaging remarks as to commissioners, staff, or the city will be accepted. Does anyone in the audience have anything they wish to bring to the commission's attention? Mr. Drobisch, thank you for bringing value to item seven.
Just one item that I thought of. I've mentioned it before, but I would like, since planning commission's major, one of their jobs is to make recommendations to city council for how to improve codes and historic preservation, and I'd like to make the recommendation that the city adopt a special historic preservation building permit to encourage those to have maybe a longer timeframe to complete a project and either a low fee, or they come in with their list of wants and a one-time fee, because we hear a lot of complaints that, well, those wood windows cost so much. Well, if you did one wall one year, one wall the next year, and broke it down that way, then the economic plight argument can kind of go away. We know it can be very expensive to do proper historic preservation. So, I, you'd have to ask legally, can you give somebody a special building permit other than regular new construction with a longer timeframe, maybe one set fee, something like that to consider? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is something that perhaps we could take up later on in the agenda this evening, seem to be appropriate, and I appreciate the creative approach to that. It is, it is an issue. Written communications on non-agenda items, we have none. We note that Commissioner Lepper advised us she would not be here this evening, and in no other communication of non-agendized, right?
Non-agendized.
Okay, very good. Presentations, educational workshops, we have none. Item 10, environmental assessments, public hearings. Item 10-1, this is a variance, a reduction of a rear yard setback. Consideration of a variance request within the medium-density multifamily residential R3 slash airport overlay zone to reduce required rear yard from 15 feet to seven and one-half feet, 7.5, to construct a deck greater than three feet in height, and to find the project categorically exempt from the California SEQA guidelines. And I'm going to guess that, Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report.
Thank you. So, 1826 Point View Drive is located within a medium-density multifamily residential zone, which has a required rear yard setback of 15 feet. The city's yard ordinance allows exceptions to the required yards in the event the structure does not exceed three feet above the natural ground level. The proposed project requests a reduction of the rear setback from 15 feet to seven and a half feet to construct a deck greater than three feet in height around the existing above-ground pool. Planning commission approval is required for projects requesting an exception to any regulation of the zoning ordinance. As outlined in the staff report, it is the opinion of staff that the commission can make the required findings to justify the granting of the rear yard variance request. Development of the parcel is limited by the slope, which creates a special circumstance on the subject parcel. The proposed deck would allow for additional safety measures that would increase safer entry and act as a deterrent against unauthorized entry by trespassers. Additionally, the strip of land running along the southern boundary of the parcel between 1826 Point View Drive and Cardinal Drive increases the overall setback from the right-of-way and greatly reduces the likelihood of the project infringing on adjoining property. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15305A, in that the project involves the reduction of rear setback that does not result in the changes to land use or density and does not create a new parcel. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the variance 24-01 request, and conditionally approve variance 24-01 located at 20, sorry, 1826 Point View Drive, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. The chair would also note that we have a memo dated March 5, 2024, from the Building Department, supporting the requested action as appropriate. So, questions of staff by commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open, Commissioner Keeney, go ahead.
Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Hunter, thanks for pointing out that we have this letter as part of the package tonight from our building official. It's incumbent on the building official and inspectors in that department to ensure the safety of this project. That's the one thing I, in looking at the diagrams, I wasn't really sure how there's going to be, the gate would work. I know that that is, you mentioned that that's an updated, actually, that's in the public of, the building official's letter, that that's an updated requirement to, to have a pool secured. And so, it's not, it's not in our purview to make sure that the design meets that standard. That's something that the building department will take care of.
Correct. Yeah, you're just approving the construction of the deck-
Okay.
-within the rear yard.
And, and all the other concerns about safety that are, that are mentioned, that then goes to another department. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Then, Commissioner Carter, a question? Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicants or the representatives to address the commission with any additional information that they might have. Is anyone from the project in the audience this evening? Hi.
Hi.
Well, go ahead and step up to the podium, and you are not compelled to say, explain anything if you think the staff report is, is adequate, or if there's anything you'd like to offer. No pressure. If you do speak, though, tell us who you are.
I'm Eric Perkins. This is my wife, Megan. We're the property owners. Staff report looks good. We thought about bringing our children and some leverage, but they weren't interested in a public meeting.
Smart children. And we have, we have your letter as part of our, our packet, I think, is pretty straightforward, at least for me, between this and the letter from the, the building official, it seems pretty cut and dry. So, if there's anything you want to add, feel free. Otherwise, sit back and enjoy the show. Commissioner, sorry.
Since, since you are setting up, thank you so much for coming down and taking time, you know, during this public hearing. I just want to make sure that, so your, your property line, as, for example, this, this picture that shows the, the pool with the cover, your property line, does it go all the way to the road, or most of the way?
To our surprise, it does not.
It goes, it approaches it, but there's a-
Yeah.
Okay. But not enough, I guess I got a little confused looking at one of the, the pictures, your project location versus the boundary. And so, is there any possibility of someone building on that little piece of-
Not, not without the, the same process, I suppose, without requesting a variance, especially a narrow stretch. I'm not sure historically why it was sold with a parcel.
Yeah, things happen. You know, I sympathize with you that it would have made sense just to take it on down to the road, but-
Right. And, you know, we, since we've moved, since we've lived there seven, almost seven years, we've actually maintained that, that property and-
It appears to be, yeah, a part, part of your parcel, but, and I appreciate, I want to thank you for, you know, keeping the vegetation clear and, and things like that, even though it's outside really of your strict responsibility.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that I kind of understood how the, how the project sat on your property versus an adjoining piece of property. That's all I had. Thank you.
Just real quick, I actually did, I actually did forget to, a quick disclosure, I did do a site visit. And actually, I noticed the same thing that you were just mentioning, Commissioner Keeney, when I drove by on Cardinal Drive, how far away that pool is from Cardinal, that we're talking about a 15, or actually, a seven and a half foot variance, when that, that pool is a long way from Cardinal Drive, and so-
Effectively, yeah.
Yeah. So, anyway, I just want to make that quick disclosure. I did do a site visit, and I had the same conclusion that that's, there's no way that's there.
The pictures are actually very good quality. And, and thank you for providing, these, these are your photos?
Yeah.
Thank you for providing them. They really do, do tell a story. So, thank you. Now, I think I understand really what's going on.
Just out of curiosity, how, how much, because I did not do a site visit, how much property, feet-wise, between your property line, and, yeah, how big of a piece of property are you talking about?
Between ours and Cardinal?
Well, I guess it'd be the property is between your property and Cardinal. I mean, how, how wide is that?
I, 20 feet, maybe?
Yeah, 20 feet.
So.
I only, I only throw this out there, maybe at some point you consider a, approach the property owner and consider a boundary line adjustment. Just move your line all the way down. Boom.
Yeah.
You know, it has no bearing on what we're going to do this evening, but just a thought.
That, that property owner is the owner of apartments, but now has become an Airbnb. And so, there was, at one time, someone that came on the property marking the property lines to determine what that looked like, but-
Yeah.
Said they had no plans to do anything necessarily. It was just a matter of marking those lines.
I would say its narrowest, it's probably 20. It really varies, and it includes a, a storm drain that-
Yeah.
-has backed up that we cleaned out.
A classic, a classic Placerville odd, hanger-on piece of property.
Yeah.
Of which we have many in our community.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Well, consider yourselves blessed. All right. Any other questions of the applicants? All right, thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wish to address the commission on this project? Mr. Drobisch?
Just real quick, looking at the, the drawings, they have a very extreme situation with their parcel. It is mountain goat territory. So, everyone deserves, you know, fair use of their property. So, it'd be easy in your finding to say there's no special treatment for them because the, the pictures are worth a thousand words. It's a-
Very good.
Good luck.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. So.
I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the project. I really, I think, just cutting-
The chair would not get in the way of a motion being made.
I just wanted to, real quick, just to address the, the four things that, that staff requires that we find. I feel that staff's argument was compelling, that all four of these special circumstances are met, applicable to the subject property, and also, you know, in regard to what Mr. Drobisch just said, that's actually isn't our findings. I am completely comfortable that all four of these special circumstances are met, and that this project is, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to approve it. So, if you want to make the motion.
I anticipate that Commissioner Keeney can take that as a second on her motion that she is about to make now.
Okay, I'll, I'll go-
Unless Commissioner Smith, you, you wanted to get in before a motion is made?
No, just her.
All right. Okay.
All right. I'll move that. We adopt the staff report as part of the public record and make the findings in support of the variance 24-01 request, that the request is exempt from environmental review, that it qualifies for categorical exemption under SEQA, Section 15305A, and that the request involves a minor setback variance not creating, resulting in the creation of a new parcel due to the existing built nature of the site and surrounding area and project site and topography. The granting of the request does not constitute a special privilege not enjoyed by others in the vicinity in the zone in which the property is located. The construction of a deck is an accessory use permitted, and the proposed construction would be located entirely within the subject parcel, as well as would increase the safety measures for accessing the existing above-ground pool. And the granting of this request will not be detrimental to public health, safety, convenience, or welfare, nor injurious to the properties and improvements in the vicinity of the project site. Further, that we conditionally approve variance 2401 located at 1826 Point View Drive, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and the, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included as Attachment 1 of the staff report dated April 2nd, 2024. And in Attachment 1, we have seven recommended conditions of approval in, in the, for the sake of saving some time, I agree with all seven conditions of approval as written. And that is my motion.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
It was seconded by Commissioner Smith. With your microphone on again, please.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. And so, then, discussion. The only thing I, I would ask, do you want to make any reference to the memo of the building officials supporting this, and also that this will bring the project into compliance with the state's stricter safety regulations regarding?
Is that not included as incorporated by reference as it was part of the package that was presented?
It is, but it would, but it is, but I think it adds to the, to the strength of the findings. Not that they necessarily need to, but it points it out.
It's an attachment to the staff report that was made by another division, because we route our applications to various departments and other divisions to review.
And it is labeled as Attachment 2. So, it is a part of the staff report.
It's part of the staff report. I don't think you need to make any other references, because essentially, what you're trying to do is make a finding that the encroachment of the deck is, is appropriate. The fence has to meet the, the state requirements, anyway, regardless of the encroachment of the deck.
Okay. Any other discussion on the item? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. There is a automatic, or standard 10-day appeal process. Good luck with your project, and thank you for attending on your project. Okay. So, item 11, we have no continued items. Item 12, new business. Election of officers for 2024, Chair and Vice Chair. As much as I would like to have this item, given the absence of Commissioner Lepper, we're going to have to continue this to the next meeting, and hopefully, we'll have five, all five members of the commission present for that. So, then, that brings us to item 13, 13.1, staff reports. An opportunity for staff to bring us up to date, and hopefully, there'll be a meeting soon, so that we can do those officers.
I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
We will have a meeting on the 16th.
On the-
April 16th.
April 16th, great. 4/16, we will have a meeting. Fantastic. And I, I do note that there is progress on the Burning Barrel Distillery project. That seems to be moving forward. Anything on the hotel up at J. Quay?
Staff did receive some correspondence from the project proponent, requesting a status on certain items that are to come back to the planning commission, those being the landscaping plan, I believe, outdoor lighting plan, and the master sign plan.
Okay.
And, and the parking.
Okay. So, the good news is the project's active.
It is active.
The, the bad news, it's, it's just slow, but as long as it's active.
If it's just a memo, I'll take it.
Okay. All right. We'll go. Then, planning commission matters, an opportunity for planning commissioners to bring items forth. We're going to start with 13.2.1. Commissioner?
Actually, staff had said that we should address that staff report amendment on this item. Is that where we want to do that?
Yeah. Let me open the item, and then we can.
Sorry. I apologize. Before we get to 1321.
Oh, fair enough. That's all right. Yes, we can go ahead and do that. I'll, I'll defer to Commissioner Carter. We're going to circle back to the item he was raising earlier before we get to 1321. If that's all right with you, Pierre, per your recommendation. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, that makes sense. I think what we want to do is just memorialize what Commissioner Carter's requesting that staff will revise, the staff will- that staff will revise the staff report. I was referenced the staff report number
Yes.
In the item, and then we'll just strike that item.
Thank you, Mr. Evas. I just wanted, and I apologize to the chair for everybody.
It's fine, absolutely fine.
Wanted to make sure that we got that on the record as being handled, so, thank you.
Okay, then, uh, we'll go ahead, let me get my, let me get this, okay. Um, thirteen-point-two-point-one, special committee report. So, this evening we have a report by the historic review special committee back to the planning commission. I wanna say first, before we even get into the discussion, that, um, I wanna thank, uh, Commissioner Smith and Commissioners Carter for their continued work on, on this item. And, and it is really very important, not only to the commission, but to the city writ large. And, um, I appreciate, uh, the passion and energy that you've brought forth to this. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to either one of you, uh, however you wanna handle this, and, uh, take it away, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, so a long-awaited, um, memo has been included in today's agenda. We look forward to hearing, uh, from, uh, staff and from fellow commissioners about their input. Moving forward, how to address our responsibilities as, assigned to us by the city council as the historic advisory committee. So, we've laid out, uh, some priorities that we thought, um, fell within our, our purview, or our mandate, actually. And, uh, we've kinda put them in, we, we took into account the recommendations of the, of our fellow commissioners when we first had this conversation, as well as the items on the founding, uh, resolution, to kind of craft these recommendations moving forward. And, um, so, yeah, I really look forward to getting, uh, some input from staff and some input from our fellow commissioners about, uh, their thoughts and whether we accurately captured their recommendations and any changes or, um, updates that they would like to, uh, add to our findings. And I'd like Commissioner Smith to jump in and address it also.
I think what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna speak for Commissioner Lepper since she provided us a letter. And I'll just read into, uh, what her, uh, inputs are, uh, on this. One, she's, boy, she suggests signs at the major entries to our historic districts, notifying all that they exist. And I have seen this in other communities. I think it's a good idea now entering, you know, the, um, whatever, uh, district. Second, create a one-pageer for homeowners in historic districts about what they need to be aware of. And, and I think this is really, really important. And I think it's gonna get to another, uh, issue, and that is, and you identified it in your report, which, which I strongly support. And I think, uh, at least, uh, Councilmember Clarici, I remember him, uh, mentioning it. There were probably some other council members that did, said, you know, community, community involvement and, and approval and buy-in, community buy-in on the whole historic district concepts and how they're established and, and what's in it is, is critical. So I think it kinda follows along with that. A public Q and A session, again, I totally support this. Uh, we need to notify all homeowners in districts when meetings are happening. And, um, uh, fourth bullet, we need to identify our key properties in the districts as soon as possible that we want to definitely preserve. Agree, and ev, and the last bullet, efforts to photograph each house in district, or at least downloads should be a priority in order to set our baseline and standard on how the houses look, et cetera. Let's see. Prior, she says a priority should be notifying current homeowners, they live in a district, and what that means, and to documenting properties in order to be informed going forward. And the one-pageer would be helpful for this. So, anyway, those are some of her comments. Commissioner Smith?
I guess I'd just follow up with what Commissioner Carter said. You have, um, what we've done is basically make steps towards doing what had been delegated to us maybe nine years ago. Major responsibilities to examine a number of issues and make recommendations to the city council. So, take, for example, some of the things that we've developed expertise about is we've heard from all kinds of people about, well, I didn't know that there were these guidelines. I didn't know we were in a historic district. Sometimes, clearly it's people who didn't know. Sometimes it's people who didn't wanna know. And sometimes it's people who knew and didn't wanna abide by it. So, here's a suggestion. What we did, we talked to people in the real estate industry and talked to the recorder, uh, for the county, Janelle Horn. She'd never heard that there were these districts, but she had some quick ideas. Uh, there are ways to make sure that there's a notice recorded with every property. There's a way to make sure that there's a notice sent out to all the owners. And that can be done without the city picking up the bill. So, those are things we'd go back and talk to her about. So, while we have some ideas that we've naturally formulated as we come across, they're not in concrete. And it's very important that we hear from people in the public sector in all aspects of, of this field. And I know that when I've been on that side of the dais, when you have three minutes, it's very short. So, what we experienced with a workshop is a gigantic chance to explore these things with more depth. And that will encourage people to, uh, to participate. And when you do that, you not only get the best ideas, but you also, uh, get more confidence in the final product.
I, I totally agree, and I think a workshop, workshop or series of workshops, um, would be, would be quite valuable. Um, in your report, you, one of the recommendations, uh, was that we should perhaps, um, adopt an ordinance similar to what other communities have done. But, uh, you did not include a sample, right, from some other, I wanna make sure I didn't miss it.
The way we understood, uh, your request was, uh, to have this kinda be a, a ten-thousand-foot view.
Oh, no, it's fine.
And, and not get too specific. I mean, we obviously have, during our joint, um, meeting with the city council, uh, we actually looked at, I believe it was Grass Valley. We looked at their, um, historic ordinance. Um, and we found it to be far superior, at least in our opinion, uh, to what we have adopted. And so, um, obviously, moving forward, we, we could make recommendations.
Okay.
But we wanted this to be, um, you know, easily digestible and kind of a ten-thousand-foot view and not make specific recommendations as to, you know, where, how to move forward.
I think this is, this is precisely what the chair had in mind when putting forth a special committee in the first place. Commissioner Keeney?
Yes, I wanna thank you both. Uh, I read this, there's a lot of good information in here. And, um, I can tell how, um, how difficult it is, you know, how you struggle with, uh, reading documents that are years old and trying to figure out, uh, what the, um, what the background was at that time. And then looking, you know, where we are today, especially after, in light of the workshop that we had just last fall, uh, at the end of the summer. So, um, thank you for that. Uh, what, um, I pulled from this that I think is the, like, our top priority right now for the planning commission is, uh, on page two, is you mentioned that we have not engaged in a systematic examination of, of the Secretary of Interior Standards. And, um, that's, I think that's a good place for us to start. And, um, you know, we've talked about, uh, workshops and updates. Uh, those, um, those also are very important. But what's happened is that, uh, different planning commissioners have been more or less interested in these, in researching these, uh, standards. I've taken it on, I've, I've read them, I've found them to be, you know, very approachable. There, there's a lot of detail in there, certainly. But, you know, I, I think they're understandable to the layperson. But we have not done that systematic evaluation as a commission. And, uh, so that was something I thought, let's bring that up to our top priority as, as a commission, which was the charge of the special committee. Unfortunately, a lot of, you know, your good ideas and, and things that you, uh, you've gotten from the public, that you got from the workshop, and you've, um, you've summarized in this document, those are things that the city council has to, um, has to make the decision to move forward because it usually involves, well, involves money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it, it's, uh, changing an ordinance. So that's, that's not a, a simple, you know, draft, couple of drafts and revise it. That's, that's, uh, quite an investment on the city's part. And, um, so before we, uh, get to the point of making a recommendation like that to the city council, because, um, you know, I, I realize that that is part of our responsibility, too. Maybe step one could be taking the systematic, um, look. We can, we can break those standards down and look at them. And I was wondering, I, I would just have a quick question for, for staff. We already have a spot for presentations and educational workshops under number nine in our standard agenda, and we also then have planning commission matters. Which section, uh, would, do you think would be best? If, if we're not gonna bring in, uh, an expert for a workshop or watch a video, would it be better for us to agendize, uh, a discussion like that under, um, line thirteen? Uh, I had thought that nine would be better, uh, because we, you know, I'm, I'm seeing the word workshop, but I realize it's something that, as a commission, we need to discuss.
If it's a formal workshop, then we would agendize that under item number nine, presentation, educational, educational workshop sessions.
What I'm envisioning here is that, uh, you know, we, we break apart the, uh, standards. Uh, obviously, we're gonna need a little help from staff, uh, to get materials together, but have it open to the public so we can get that comment. But it also, uh, it allows the commissioners to become educated on the standards. And, and then we can freely talk about, you know, what we see in our community. And then, uh, because that's where we're.
I just wanna point out, that was one of my top three training, training for commission. We, we actually have to become at some level, subject matter experts.
And that, uh, training, that also is something that occurred to me as I was reading this is, um, you know, before we, we jump ahead with, uh, some of these more, um, intensive recommendations, see if we can ask for the city to create some sort of, um, stipend? I, I don't know exactly what the right word is, but for us to, to be educated. I, I recently took a, um, uh, training on the SOI standards. And, um, it was not that expensive, it's not that cheap. But if the city would, uh, say, you know, here's, whatever. We can look at what, what these things cost, but allow for each commissioner to.
Specific, specifically dedicated for this issue, so not general education.
Or a continuing education on this.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, these responsibilities were given back to the commission when the historic committee was disbanded.
Right.
And so, and, and I think, you know, the commission said, sure, we'll, we'll do that. But then I think as the report mentions, and it's absolutely correct on page two, which is what you are referencing, the commission has not really done anything in a structured, focused, deliberate sort of way. I, I think part of that is because very few of the commissioners are really, uh, educated. And then, this, this cycle, we get two commissioners who are passionate and, you know, educated and really wanna make something happen. And so I think, yes, this, putting a little bit of money where our mouth is, if we say this is important as one, and also just bring, elevating, uh, the commission's, uh, knowledge in this area, which, which we have to deal with so frequently, and is important. So I totally concur with that.
Right.
I interrupted you, I know you were going somewhere else.
You know, I, I just appreciate this back and forth, this open, uh, dialogue. But, um, you know, the, uh, before we get back to re-establishing, uh, the historic advisory committee, you know, we may get there. Um, but as, you know, um, Amy Lepper, uh, said something in her email to us.
Yeah, she did.
Uh, she, she's not sure that we do need the, uh, separate historic advisory committee. And I, I'm leaning that way also because I, I think the planning commission has done an excellent job. I, you're gonna have differences of opinions and different ways of interpreting and applying these. And, and that's gonna happen no matter who's on the commission. Those, those differences, but we need to talk it out and see how our, um, actions have played out in our community. And so I don't see that we have, uh, a need. I don't, I don't know what the, uh, proof is, you know, to, to argue for a new historic advisory committee. I, you know, having said, you know, I feel that we've done a great job. We can do better, and so we can educate ourselves and, and move forward. We also haven't had those really big, complicated projects that, uh, you know, the SOI standards really, you know, as we've discussed, really apply to, you're working on the whole facade. And that, it really isn't the level that we've, uh, had to address yet. It may happen, uh, but, so for the type of projects that we have seen, uh, here at the planning commission, both, you know, since I've been on the commission and, and before, I think, uh, we've done an admirable job, um, looking at, uh, the relevant standard to the project. You know, typically, it's, a lot of it's windows and siding. That's pretty much what we doors occasionally.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I think we, we actually are fairly well-versed in that aspect. Uh, but, you know, I think it is worth our while, uh, to take a little more time and agendize these things. And, you know, working with staff, um, when we have maybe a lighter schedule to insert, uh, that into our agenda and, and just keep this going. Let the public know, um, those interested parties know that we're working on this. Uh, and so they'll just have to kinda bear with us. I think that is a good way to keep the momentum going without burdening the city with another, uh, you know, that, that was a big production when we had the expert come in. And I think, uh, we may need to do that at some point. But, but before that, uh, I, I think a lot of work can be done just here at the, the commission level. And, and getting input from our, our, you know, our local residents, our local, uh, experts who, um, would like to, you know, share the, uh, their education with us. So, I, um,
What did you think about the?
I think that's pretty much it. I think that we're off to a good start with this.
Yeah, what did you think about the recommendation of, uh, well, like, uh, expanding historic districts, particularly the one about Main Street? Which, which I frankly, I think, yes, in, in my view. There, there are very few parts of, of the community, to me, really speak historic as, as much as, you know, downtown does.
Yeah, I, you know, I just have to say, at, um, at the first, first look at that, I, I disagree with that. But, again, before we make a recommendation to the city council that that's what, you know, Placerville needs, I would like to have a, um, a specific.
A lot more discussion and, and work, yeah, I, I totally agree. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm building up to, to something, but it, before I get to that, two things. Cleve is, has graced us with his presence this evening. And I don't think it's because the meeting fell on April second, or this is supposed to be an April Fool's thing. So, uh, Cleve, you, you have some comments on, on this?
Yeah, Chair, Chair Friend, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before I turn the mic over to, um, to our city manager, I wanna comment on a specific item, uh, that you just, just discussed. And that was, uh, the bullet that states expansion of historic districts to include Main Street. I wanna let you know that, uh, that is a policy in the city's general plan, so we are required to consider that. It's not something that's optional, it's already, you, city policy through, through the general plan. And so, uh, when we did have the historic advisory committee, uh, we spent, um, a fair amount of time, uh, developing a draft map of the Main Street, uh, commercial historic district, the boundaries. And so, uh, we will be bringing that to you, hopefully sooner rather than later. So just to let you know that that is a.
Okay, even better, I, 'cause, okay, great. I, I like how this is coming together. That's wonderful. Sorry, um,
So with that, now that.
Our honorable city manager.
I'll turn this over to, uh,
Great.
Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Pierre. Thanks, Commissioner, Chair, and members of the planning commission. Uh, my only thing, uh, and I will make this very short and simple. I, I compliment, uh, Commissioners Carter and, and Smith on the work that they did to outline this. It's very well done, and I, I'm, it's a good job. My concern comes in simply to protect my staff for their staff time. And hopefully, I, I see heads nodding, and you're aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think a day goes by that I talked to Pierre about a project he's working on, and he says, I'm, I'm gonna try to get it, I'm gonna try to get it. His department is just very, but, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing Pierre at all. He, we, we know, Pierre and I get along well together, so. And, um, so that's my only caution. And I know one of your comments may come back to say, yeah, but we'll do the work. yeah, but we'll do the work. And I know you can do a lot of the work, but I promise you that whatever work you do, eventually something's got to come back to staff to finalize, it may just be review and et cetera, and move it forward, whether it's taken it to council for review, et cetera. So I would just make you aware of that, and whatever comes out of this, depending on how it comes out, may need to go back to the council, I've heard some comments on that, to get council direction and say, is this what you want staff working on as opposed to something that they may be working on? So I would just ask you to be aware of that and consider that in whatever you do, and your recommendation going forward, may have to come back to you again to be modified based on what council may give us direction on.
I think I speak for all the commissioners when I say we are very sensitive to staff workloads and would, do not want to do anything to the greatest extent possible that's going to increase that workload. And then, but we also, I think, want to balance that against the importance of our historic districts and historic preservations, and to come up with a way that we can do that, so we can accomplish the goal, that goal without, while also meeting the additional goal of not burdening staff. And I am hearing Commissioner Keeney's input and your input, and I'm also of the opinion that the resurrection of the historic committee is probably, is probably not something that we should be considering at this point. And that what's before us this evening, I wouldn't consider any of this ready to go forth to council for a recommendation. This needs to be noodled more, certainly at the commission level, and then probably also with the public. And then, speaking of the public, and since they're still here, Mr. Drobish brought up a comment earlier in the public comment, which, and I think is just a great example of creative thinking about things that we can do to support historic districts, right? We can, I think, he asked the question if it would be legal, I think it would be perfectly allowed before the city to come up with a separate building permit, you know, special permit as he mentioned. It'd have to be codified, I think, and all that, but I don't see why that would not be a doable thing. So I think there's other things that can happen.
Again, let's kind of come back to additional staff time to do that. A project, a property owner can easily get an extension. Is it difficult to get it, is it expensive to get an extension on, let's say, windows?
So typically, and Ms. Hunter, correct me if I misspeak, but my understanding that they have 18 months to move forward with action on their discretionary approval through the planning commission. If they don't, they can come in then for an extension of time. And so they just basically provide whatever reasonable explanation to you as to why they need that extension, and then you have the authority to grant an extension.
And there's no, there's no additional cost to them?
Yeah, there is a fee. It's noticed in the newspaper.
And I want to, this is a great example, because I think this is kind of the healthy tension between wanting to advance, you know, the priority in preservation of historic districts against, you know, not wanting to create more staff time, yet if people are going to come back for extensions, that's more staff time to prepare the agenda item and for council to consider, or a commission to consider, and people have to pay fees. So, you know, we will not, I think it would be unrealistic to think that there would be zero additional work for staff. If we still, on the other hand, say, preserving our historic districts, advancing the historic districts, doing all the things that we think we want to do is important. I think the key is the rate of the equation, of the rate of the reaction, chemical reaction, if you will, okay? If you try to do it, boy, all at once, and, you know, and all at once meaning, you know, five years, boom, that's going to be a heavy lift, but if you spread that out, just like the suggestion to spread out the building, well, I think it becomes more manageable. So I think that is, that is exactly precisely the balance, I think, that the city council's going to have to say, this is what we're comfortable with, you know, with the burdens on staff and the commission, and so on and so forth. Commissioner Smith, did you have anything you want to offer?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
As usual.
Oh, please.
And you're lucky because I didn't bring my hyalineade, so.
Don't say that.
I guess I wanted to offer some assurances that nothing was intended on our part to suggest any deficiencies in what's transpired in the past. It's understandable with us being the two newest folks, there's going to be some curiosity or doubt even, but we're committed to the same goals that we all have. And any recommendations we ever come up with doesn't mean anybody's going to follow them, nor do we really want to, in response to something suggested, want to burden staff. So let me just offer you some illustrations, because we put off our work for many months because we were told there was going to be a joint workshop. And at that joint workshop, one of the examples raised was the Grass Valley standards. So Commissioner Carter pulled them up. It's a very thick matter, and we reviewed it. And one of the things we found is that Grass Valley has an index that lists where you can go for resources and staff, experts to assist you. So if you're looking for someone with expertise in masonry, for example, one of the things I learned is that if you're trying to repair the building up the street, the Pearson-Sutter work, you can't put in the kind of pointing that you would with today's mortar. If you do, it'll destroy it. How'd they learn that? Talking to people who've gone through that process before. So what they did is they had a list of places where you go to get certain materials, because in a small town, our choices on the surface seem limited, and then where you go to find contractors who have work in this area. Doesn't mean you steer anybody to it, but it provides them with that availability. So we can get volunteers, but basically you've already got those kind of materials already available. And then as we reported to you maybe six months ago, when we went through historic districts, the list of inventories for, I forget how many it was, 50 or whatever, we could clearly see there were a lot of different types, but the best ones available, where a lot of money, a lot of time went into them, had sections that listed where you go to find out historical background on your house. And we've known from people who come in here that there's an interest in that. And it's our, it's one of the objectives of having the standards in the first place, is we want to stimulate interest in those matters. So they have a list, an inventory, a directory, if you will, of places you can go to get background information on your house. So that doesn't mean additional staff work, we cut and paste and lift it from other people. So we're not, we're very sensitive to imposing burdens on the staff, and we've sought to accommodate by waiting with a good project you did before. One of the things is that this body has a lot of expertise. On my left, who's not here, Amy is just wonderful at spotting typos, all her, because that's what she did for a living. And I will tell you that one of the things I've heard is that the information about the guidelines is very complicated. It can be simplified, some editing can be done. You don't have to follow it, but we can assist you in getting that kind of work done, which saves you time. But that's one of the frustrations that people out there complain about, is it's difficult to figure out what we're supposed to do. So that might help you to know that we're on the same team, we're headed towards the same goals, and it's not to be in conflict and frankly, in concert with what the city wants to do. Because as I remember, sure, on that side of the dais, I was known as a tenacious advocate for historic preservation, but on this side, my oath was to follow the law. And I can tell you that on that side, before, I'm the only one in the room who opposed the Interior Secretary's standards. I said they were too strict, they were difficult to follow, and you've got conflicting objectives. One is you want places to be fire resistant, but you can't do that for Mount Vernon and some other historic buildings, so how do you work that in? And then you want buildings to be energy efficient, how can you do that? So those are some of the issues I raised before, and what do you know, those keep propping up. So the people who proposed it from the historic advisory committee said they only expected that to be a start. So what we proposed is that we do just that, take it as a starting point, and help assist you and come up with ideas for how to make it more workable, so that the objectives for economic development, getting more housing starts coming along, and keeping the historic treasures that we have enhanced. So I hope you can see that we're on the same page.
This is a public hearing, and I'd like to invite members of the public to also speak, and I don't, you know, avoid the crush to the podium, but, Mr. Drobish, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I just have one page of items, a suggestion that planning commission suggests to council that all demo permits, especially of structures over 75 years old, especially those outside the designated historic districts, become a discretionary item and have to come to planning commission for review, because we lost another old house across from the Dollar Store up there, it was just one day gone, boom, you know, and there was a real nice architectural piece that was in bad shape behind UPS store years ago, boom, gone. That would help provide a little, just a quick review, maybe ask them, can you please salvage the material? The lumber in those buildings is worth a fortune, you can't buy it today. Yes to a pre-approved list of materials for window siding, roofing, et cetera, and maybe even you can, it would be, if you met those pre-approved items, it would be a staff-level item that would help reduce stress on an applicant looking for historical preservation. And I assume this happens, but when there's a project within 300 feet of historical resource, that, in my mind, the way I read it, it should come and get review, but I don't know that it always happens, like, something on, this is my thought, like, if you think politically it's not viable yet for historic Main Street district, if any project changed to the exterior that you can see from the street, was it within 300 feet of a historic resource, Bell Tower, Courthouse, almost everything downtown would be triggered. And it would be very easy to just say, anything within 300 feet of, anything on the historical resource inventory triggers special discretionary review for architectural compatibility, you can find the language for that. And it might be an easier way to get into that historic district review that you would like to see on Main Street without creating an actual district. And yes, the maps are already created, I saw them, there's probably a quarter inch of dust on them now, but. You might have to be cautious about saying, here's a list of masons, carpenters, plumbers, you know, whatever that we recommend for, it just has to be generic. I mean, I could see having a list of stores where you can get the materials, but when you start recommending actual companies, it would be problematic to have the government And a clarification at city level that the historic resource inventory has the four residential districts, and then it has a list of all kinds of structures outside those districts that are individually listed. And to me, everything on that list should be considered the historic resource inventory. And I remember talking with staff before, they kind of saw it a different way. So there's individual buildings around town, outside those districts, and they're listed on the list, but it seems to me anything within 300 feet of that should get a review. And I do believe now that those buildings do get review at planning commission level. Yes to well-publicized, public workshops with back and forth, you know, just spitballing ideas, maybe invite officials from Grass Valley and other Gold Rush towns to present how they did it. Yes to training, and you could just spend a lot of personal time on YouTube, learning a lot on your own, and you could reduce the cost to the city with that. So then, there's a question, if they take volunteers to go around and photograph these special buildings, would, a legal question, if three planning commissioners were going down the street together doing that, would the Brown Act allow that, even at a volunteer You could use Google Streets, but you probably do need that on-the-sidewalk picture to get the detail that you need. Yes to going through the Secretary of Interior guidelines for, you know, for line by line, strike out and underscore, add and remove, and make it Placerville-specific, something that works for us. It was a temporary stopgap measure, as I remember, and the one thing I want removed from there first is, a new item, architectural item added to a project must differentiate itself dramatically. So if you have an old house and you want to put in a window, it's got to be obviously modern or something, that is the worst thing. You really need to blend, even if you're adding a new conjectural architectural item, I don't care, it needs to blend with the period of the house. So those are some thoughts, and yes to workshops, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Other discussion on this item, Commissioner Carter?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris and Commissioner Keeney, for your input. I find myself almost completely in agreement with all of your input. I wanted to specifically address the concerns regarding staff time, and I hope it came through in our memo. I know we addressed it specifically, at least in the final item, that, you know, relative to staff resources, we're very concerned, obviously, I know you guys are overtaxed, it's not our intention to make your job any more difficult, and I hope that came through very clearly in a number of the items that we put on here. I just wanted to address a couple of specific things, and thank you, Mr. Drobish, for bringing up this item particularly regarding staff time. You know, we intentionally didn't really address this 300 feet from historic resources that we shall, I mean, it does say in this resolution that we shall advise on appropriate means to maintain the integrity of historic resources. That, we felt, would have been a huge tax on staff's time, although it is mandated to the commission in our resolution, we didn't really address it because of our sensitivity to staff's resources. And so I just wanted to address that and hope that staff understood that we were being very, very much concerned with their schedules. Thank you for addressing the expansion of historic districts to include Main Street being a general plan requirement. There's a reason that, you know, we specifically, it's kind of hard, you know, you look at the bullet points, and the bullet points are very specific, and then I hope that you read in to each individual item, because we did mention that we weren't necessarily in favor of immediately trying to make Main Street a historic district. We spoke specifically to kind of a planning approach, and just any projects that are in this possible Main Street district, that we continue to include the possibility of that in planning documents. And so I hope that people just read beyond the bullet points and kind of understood our intention with this, even in the Mills Act bullet point. You know, we're not proposing that we right away become a certified local government, we just propose that possibly moving forward, that we include in planning documents and planning decisions, the possibility in the future of becoming a certified local government, and including that in the planning process. And so I just really wanted to. And so I just really wanted to address that, you know, these were put in the order that they are specifically for a reason, the last one being the reestablishment of the Historic Advisory Committee. And I, and I said, or we said, sorry, specifically that this is a long-term goal that would only be accomplished if everything else fell into place, that it would necessarily, if there was enough members of the public that through this buy-in process and through involving the public, that if enough people were excited and passionate about this, then there might be a call for this to happen. We weren't calling for it to happen. We were just hoping that it would happen as a natural byproduct of this process. And so there's a reason that we put these in the order that we did, and the reason that we, you know, our, our thoughts are, I think, are pretty well put forward, you know, in the explanation of each bullet point. And I just hope that people read beyond the bullet points to understand where our thoughts are, because we certainly were not calling for the immediate expansion of historic districts or the immediate reestablishment of the Historic Advisory Committee. That would be, I think that would be, you know, way beyond the, what the chair and the, you know, what the commission of, or what the, our role as this Historic Advisory Committee, Special Committee is. So anyway, I just wanted to address those couple of concerns that were brought up, and yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Keeney?
Thank you. So I think, you know, we've covered a lot of ground, and this is a really good first step for this commission. I had questions for staff. So we're, you know, talking about workshops at this level, gentrizing that, and then there's also the responsibility to make a recommendation to City Council. So how does that, how does that occur? Can, at the conclusion of a workshop, can the Planning Commission then discuss, make a motion, and then make that recommendation? Or at the conclusion of a workshop, should the Planning Commission put that out and have that specific recommendation agendized? What I want to make sure is that we're capturing enough public input, people who want to speak to that item, and make sure that we hear everybody. I don't want to rush forward with a recommendation to, you know, adopt a whole new set of standards or anything. So, but I want to make sure that we're on, you know, solid legal footing, I guess, if you will. In a workshop, is that enough opportunity for the public to, to comment on the actions that, and give us their input?
So Chair, if I may, I, I see the workshop as a way of providing an educational background for, for the commissioners and allowing the public then to provide input. But I wouldn't see at the end of a workshop where you're going to make a recommendation to council. I would see then, you would, you would hold a meeting then to discuss. So again, you have your subcommittee, and the subcommittee then hopefully would be formulating, you know, questions or actions to be taken up by the commission following the workshops. I think the workshops is what you need to have a solid ground before you start making your decisions on where you'd like to see the city go.
So we, we gather information, and again, the public can, can comment at that time, but then we would have, have to have that agendized for a subsequent meeting, again, to offer a public input.
Create an agenda item that the public could then come and speak on?
Then make a motion.
Correct, correct. Yeah, that precisely. Yeah, the workshop would, would put forth ideas, then, you know, we would request that those be put, you know, some ideas for action.
So then we can formalize it, and then maybe we, during, at the subsequent meeting, might tweak it a little bit to fully, you know, make sure that we, we're getting our point across, because these, I realize that once you start down the path, asking City Council to take on a big project, even, even something, you know, it seems simple, the idea of extending time for a permit. And it actually, you know, it seems like a common sense thing, but then again, too, what, what really is the big, what's the bigger burden on the city? We, we need to think about that, whether, you know, the expense of rewriting the code versus just giving people extension, the extensions they need to get the work done. What really is the best way to do that? Because we, we do want it, you know, we don't want to burden the homeowner, but we do want to have the work done properly. So thanks for clarifying that.
So I'm going to make some findings. It seems to me from the discussion, and before I even do that, again, I want to compliment and thank Commissioners Carter and Smith for, for this work and just staying on it and continuing to do what was asked. And this is precisely what I had in mind when I put the special committee together some months ago. From where I sit, I think, I'll make a finding that there's a clear need for this work to continue. There's a clear need for the effort surrounding the historic districts. The other finding is the responsibilities of what was previously the Historic Committee is now vested in the Planning Commission. It's fallen to this body to continue that work, to take on those responsibilities. I think, I make the finding that establishing another Historic Committee is impractical at this point, and would in, in and of itself create a substantial demand on staff, which we don't want to do. And then I'll make the finding that this special committee has completed its task and would be at an end. With that then, as the chair, I do have the authority to create a standing committee. And so I do want to create a standing Historic Committee, and however we phrase it, Historic Advisory is fine for me, as part of this commission. Two members, and it'll be a regular agenda item, just like we have agenda items such as, will it be a standing committee item? Probably come, Pierre, you ought to, you know, determine where you want to put it on the agenda, probably still under committees, like we have it presently, okay? I am going to request that Commissioners Carter and Smith continue, but if necessary or desirable, since I won't be chair much longer, if Amy were here, I wouldn't be chair right now, but at least for the next meeting, then I will volunteer to also serve on that committee. In order to take this action requires approval of my fellow commissioners, and I hope that you'll see value in doing this. I think it's something that's needed, and I think it's a good bridge between where we are now and where we might want to be. And I would see the standing committee's responsibility, if nothing else, to really take this elephant and bite it off in very manageable pieces, and to develop a roadmap, okay? I think we need a roadmap for where we need to go, and that council can see. And I love the idea about talking to people like Grass Valley and other communities. I think Commissioners, so I think there's a lot of things that can be done, can be done at minimal expense. I also like Commissioner Keeney's suggestion of, you know, maybe the city could come up with a little bit of money to help offset costs of training and maybe going someplace, those kinds of things. So I'm going to leave it there. I would like to, to establish this standing committee to continue this work, because I think it's so important.
I'll second that.
I'll put it in a motion if necessary. Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chair. Thank you. I agree in whole with everything that you just said. I just want to make sure that I captured correctly everything that you said. So there's a clear need for the effort to continue towards historic preservation, that the responsibility falls to the Planning Commission based on the founding resolution for the Historic Advisory Committee and its disbandment, that there's no reason, it's not reasonable to reestablish the Historic Advisory Committee currently due to constraints on staff, that the special committee has reached its goal and as such is disbanded, and that the chair's recommendation is that we establish a standing committee. I would be willing to continue in that role if the chair so desires, and I would look forward to seeing where we can forward this effort.
Chair, if we may, could we take a slight recess, and I grab the bylaws back from you so we?
Oh, yes, you may have, you may have them back right now. And I was, for the record, I was citing 6A. I didn't think of it until I was coming up here after my conversation with you, it was going, oh, I know she'll have a copy of the bylaws. I need to take a look at them. Do you want to officially recess for a few minutes? Yeah, Chair, if I may, we just want to look at the, at the bylaws and make sure that the way we're proceeding is correct, because this is, this is just an informal discussion item on our agenda. It's not an action item on. There's no action, well, I don't think the bylaws require that I have an agendized item. It just says the chair, as he feels necessary, necessary or desirable, may appoint a standing committee or a special committee. So it's an appointment.
Does that have to be shown as an action item on the agenda?
I think that it should be. I mean.
Yeah. I don't think the special committee was.
Technically, any item that you're discussing, the public has the right to comment on that. It was not technically an item that was on your agenda for approval. So the public member could argue that they didn't have the opportunity to comment on that, because.
I don't want to make headlines and say, Chair, the Chair of the Planning Commission got into a row with the city manager.
I don't think it's a major issue, but I think out of a multitude of caution, perhaps we, you take.
Fair enough.
You schedule, agendize it for a future.
And I, and I would ask that we, could we add that to our next meeting? I, I do like, and I loved when Mr. Driscoll was our, our attorney, because we would, we would wrangle over things like this. I would simply offer that since we did have this report as an agenda item, that it seems like would be a logical thing to flow from it. But please agendize it for next meeting, and I'd like to see that. In the meantime, I'd like to see how other commissioners, Commissioner Smith, I think Commissioner Community.
I have a comment on, the standing committee, I would like to have their responsibilities clearly defined. And I think that may have been one of the things the special committee struggled with. They had a lot of information, and I'm not sure that, you know, they got off to a strong start knowing exactly what their responsibilities are. So if it's going to be a standing committee, I'd like to have those responsibilities, some, you know, expectations, so that, you know, we, we do keep moving forward, and maybe, you know, the length of the term, so that, first off, other commissioners can participate, and also so that it doesn't become a burden to any one or two commissioners at a time. So just those kinds of administrative.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think we benefited from the talents of Commissioners Carter and Smith, and I'm not sure that we can always expect to have, you know, that, that level of drive and so on and so forth. And I would see, you know, one-year probably rotation kind of thing. And, you know, it is the pleasure of the chair to do that as, in terms of appointments. So those are all great points. Since this is something I'm going to request, I will endeavor to develop within the next two weeks I can bring it back. So, because I think your, your point is absolutely correct.
And I appreciate having a little bit of time to think about it, and Amy Lippert can, may have some ideas also to share at the next meeting, so that the, the committee knows what's expected of them.
Right. I think what's just most important to me, and I, the standing committee seemed a vehicle to do it, is that we, this just doesn't go into the file, right? This work, this work needs to continue. It really is important. Commissioner Smith?
Yes. I just wanted to add, to provide, if I can, really tough effort to ease some concerns, because where you sit, the last thing you need is another hangman's tree issue, some controversy running amok, like the fears that, that some merchants have had, as I've heard through at least one council member, about what would happen if Main Street were made an historic district. So I will just share with you some things. My family has, for generations, known a number of people on Main Street that we've gone to in business with for more than a century. And one of them recently expressed, to my surprise, they didn't want downtown to be an historic district, and they explained a specific reason. There was a project that they needed to address from the standpoint of repair, but they were afraid what would happen if, if Main Street was an historic district. They felt they wouldn't have been able to do it. It was a misunderstanding. They didn't understand the way the guidelines work. Even in their strictest form, they would have not been prohibited from doing what they wanted done. I won't describe the specifics, because that starts to identify one among 50 different people. But, and I'm sensitive to merchants, because I grew up in a family of them. I knew how there was resentment towards government, not just taxes, but always telling you what you can do. And you want to paint your building, and you got to go ask permission, all that kind of stuff. But I think that a lot of, the problem is because of misunderstandings. We, all of us, need to do a job to make sure they understand the public, but in particular the merchants, if that's what we're going to be addressing with, it comes to that possibility of being a district. We need to address what the program is now, how it affects them now, because they really don't understand. It adds a lot of fear, and part of that fear is because they don't like government in the first place. Whether it's parking regulations, and you know that story, or almost anything you do. So I think that that's the reason why I've heard one of my friends on this side of, of the bench here say, well, the merchants don't want it. Well, the merchants that you may have been talking to are merchants that were not well-informed. So one of the things that we can do for you, we, the commission, is by having these kind of workshops, the public can be educated about what the potential is. That's just, I, I just wanted to ease some of the fears that might be out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so I think, is there any other discussion on this item? Again, I want to thank the two of you for your work. I think the special committee is officially disbanded, since you produced the work product that was expected of you, and set us forth.
It will be on the agenda next time.
It will be on the agenda next time, and I will work over the next couple of days to put something together that will be reasonable for, for expectations, and it'll be objective and measurable, so. All right. Well, then, oh, any issues of commissioners they want to bring forth to staff, since we're still under 13.2? Anything? If not, move to adjourn at 7:29:42. Thank you very much.